Good afternoon. This meeting of the City of Socorro City Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please silence all electronic equipment. No disruptive behavior outside will be tolerated and violators are subject to injunction and possible prosecution. La junta del consulio de la Ciudad de Socorro está por comenzar. Caballeros, por favor de quitarse las caluchas, sombreros y todos por favor de poner en silencio todo equipo electrónico. No se va a tolerar ningún tipo de comportamiento judicial o revoltozo. A quien no sigue estas reglas se le sacará y puede ser infraccionado.
It is 6:04 PM. This meeting is called to order. Item number two, pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence led by Escondrias Elementary School students.
Pledge allegiance to the flag in the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, invisible and the deed and justice for all.
Now we'd like to take some time and give this young ones certificate of appreciation. Would Ms. Abigail Aguilar please step forward? Ms. Bellavilla Sandoval and Mr. Eric Parrasa. Item number three, establishment of quorum. Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevaris.
Here.
Alejandro García.
Here.
Mayor Ivy Avalos.
Here.
Rudy Cruz.
Present.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you. Item number four, public comment. Mayor, our first speaker is Jesse Montelongo.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to recognize, this is a positive comment. I'd like to recognize Maritella from the, I guess she works for zoning and planning. And also Miriam for code enforcement. I've been working and also the Socorro Police Department and Ms. Villalobos. I've been working very hard with all of them and I've had some problems, a lot of crime. I've had a lot of issues with my neighbor as far as sexual harassment with my family, my daughter and my wife, but we did the right thing. We talked to, we got advice from the zoning and planning commission and the code enforcement division and they've caught this neighbor burning. They've caught him doing other things and I got videos of them. I have 16 cameras. Because I'm Mrs. Villalobos, thank you for the crime watch program. We're the only ones doing it right now, but I think we all need to get involved. But thank you very much for everything. I'd like to recognize these two departments, zoning and planning and code enforcement. They've done a great job. These ladies have caught this guy burning. They've caught him right there red-handed. The police have caught him red-handed. I've had it on film. I got 16 cameras, but not only that, they were, I've never seen somebody go to Bovee Road today within 15 minutes from planning, from what's it called? Planning, right next to where the recycle cinders, the department. They got there within 15 minutes. She, Myrna, responded within 15 minutes and took 30 tires that were just dumped in front of the school, in front of the bull pups and right on Bovee Road. And she was there and she got it done within 15 minutes. You know, I haven't seen nobody respond that fast besides the Socorro Police Department. Kudos to all of you. Kudos to the code enforcement. You know, you guys cut people, you guys have cut people, you guys have been doing a good job. One team, one fight. Thank you for everything. God bless you, everybody there. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor, that was our only speaker. Okay, moving on to presentations. Item number five, recognition of the Socorro High School swim team. Mr. Cruz, would you like to introduce? Sure.
Mayor Council, as a former Socorro Bulldog, I thought that it was very important to recognize the Socorro High School swim team for their hard work and dedication. The City of Socorro, Texas is very proud of you all for displaying dedication and commitment towards the goals of the team. And for that, we want to honor the Socorro High School swim team today in support of our youth and the future of this community. At this time, and I'll have mayor read out the names of those members of the team, but on behalf of the City of Socorro, this council, we would like to present this plaque to the Socorro High School swim team and their coach Patricia Flores for their award-winning year. You make Socorro proud. Congratulations on your hard work.
Now I'll call out the names of the swim team. So Ms. Irlanda Almanza. V N A Ariano. Álvaro Ávila. Samira Ávila. Alanes Barreto Cruz. Victor Carrillo Varela. Sid Lali Gallegos De La O. Alexa Chacón Ríos. Sahira González. Noel Lara. Victor Lara. Natalie López. Giara López Quiñones. Jocelyn Lozano Trejo. Emiliano Martínez. Natalie Oaxaca. Keely Olivas. Miguel Ornelas. Abril Pizarro. Hannah Ramírez. Congratulations. Victoria Ramírez. Diego Reyes. Katie Reyes. Minerva Rivera. Andrés Rubio. Emmanuel Redisson. Galilea Silva. Bethany Silva. Kayleen Soto. Joshua Torres. Samantha Torres. Jasmine Valenzuela. Salma Vázquez. Roberto Vega.
No, I think one of them was the first.
Another first champion. Yeah, it's been like 20 years.
City champion?
No, no, district champions.
I'm just waiting for them to kind of. Okay. Mo, I'm waiting till everybody bakes. So we can have silence. Okay, there she is. Ms. Villalobos. You need to, Ms. Villalobos, you need to.
Yes.
You need to stay on camera.
Oh, okay.
Would you close door, please? Okay, moving on. Item number six, recognition of Peter Villa student at Socorro Middle School who was inducted to the National Junior Honor Society and nominated to attend the Lone Star Leadership Academy in the summer of 2023. A prestigious nomination. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Today, we want to recognize a young man who's displayed good moral character through leadership, academics, and inspiration. We also would like to recognize Mr. Peter Villa, who is also an A Honorable Student at Socorro Middle School. And he was selected as Student of the Month in January of 2023 and was inducted into the National Junior Honor Society. Peter has competed in multiple UAL competitions representing his school in oral reading, modern oratory, and chess. In addition to that, Peter's currently a representative of the school counseling advisory council. In 2019, Peter, who was the only young student amongst the adults who submitted a film to the City of Socorro Film Festival. His film is titled Unaccompanied. This year, Peter was nominated to attend the Lone Star Leadership Academy in 2023, which is a prestigious nomination for academic success, leadership, and involvement in school activities. Peter, you truly are an inspiration to us all. Thank you for your hard work and dedication. And for this, the City of Socorro would like to recognize you here today. And we would also like to, after the mayor presents you with the certificate of recognition, we also would like to play Mr. Peter Villa's short film so you all can enjoy. Thank you.
Would Mr. Peter Villa please step forward? Ms. Villalobos, we can hear you.
I know. I'm trying to get them to be quiet. Shh.
Shh.
The surge of unaccompanied children and adults with children, uh, are arriving at one sector of the border, and that's the Rio Grande Valley. Second, the issue is not that people are evading our enforcement officials. The issue is that we're apprehending them in large numbers. And we're working to make sure that we have sufficient facilities to detain, house, and process them appropriately, while attending to unaccompanied children with the care and compassion that they deserve while they're in our custody. While we intend to do the right thing by these children, their parents need to know that this is an incredibly dangerous situation, and it is unlikely that their children will be able to stay. And I've asked parents across Central America not to put their children in harm's way in this fashion.
Peter, breakfast.
Okay, mom, we're coming.
Moving on to consent agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Moving on to regular agenda. Public hearing and ordinances. Item number thirteen. Public hearing of an ordinance, five forty-nine amendment, one amendment to decrease expenditures by two, twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three. It is six twenty-nine PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at six twenty-nine PM. Item number fourteen. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance, five twenty-nine amendment, one amendment to decrease expenditures by twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, fiscal year twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-three.
Motion to approve, second.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Adriana, the city manager. This item is to request approval for the first budget amendment for this fiscal year, decreasing the budget in the amount of twenty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. Attached in the backup, you, it'll provide you the departments where we're moving, uh, funds, and with the explanation of, of the reason why we're, we're doing that. Do you all have any questions, concerns?
I have a question, Mayor.
Mr. Cruz.
Can you just elaborate a little bit more as, as to the justification for the decrease?
Yes, sir. So there is, um, we've had salary savings throughout the year. And as we're going through the year, we see some line items that won't, we won't be using this fiscal year, which allows us to decrease the budget.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Ruben Reyes is absent. Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number fifteen. Public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot twenty-four, Block three, La Jolla subdivision located at one seventy-eight Escalante Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R-one, single-family residential to R-two, medium-density residential, to allow a multifamily residential development. It is now six thirty-one PM. Public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at six thirty-two PM. Item number sixteen. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro's master plan and rezoning of Lot twenty-four, Block three, La Jolla subdivision located at one seventy-eight Escalante Drive, Socorro, Texas, from R-one, single-family residential to R-two, medium-density residential, to allow a mu, a multifamily residential development.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Loreen Quimido, city planner. The item before you today is approval of a rezoning from R-one, single-family residential to R-two, medium-density residential, to allow for a multifamily residential development. The current zoning is R-one. The size of the property is twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five square feet. It is located at one seventy-eight Escalante Drive. The land is currently vacant. The proposed land use would be residential apartments, and the planning staff recommends approval with a condition to approve the site plan with eight units maximum density. Planning and Zoning Commission voted for approval of the rezoning request with the condition of the site plan being limited to eight units, uh, maximum density at their April fourth meeting. The property is in the La Jolla subdivision, and it is, uh, southwest of, uh, Buford and Alameda. Here is the zoning map showing the R-one and some R-two, uh, to the left hand of your screen, and, uh, not visible under the, um, location map. It is the other smaller R-two, a couple of R-two lots in the, in the map area. Here are some photographs of the property, uh, looking at it from the intersection, and an aerial view as well, showing that the land is vacant. Public notice was sent to property owners within two hundred feet of the residence. No notices were, uh, submitted in either support or opposed to the property owner's request. There was one speaker at the Planning and Zoning Commission who did, uh, speak against the development, uh, noting the increase in traffic that the development would, um, would bring. Here is a depiction of the, the floor plan. Each unit would be five hundred, five hundred and eighty-three square feet with a total floor area of two thousand, three hundred and thirty-two square feet. And this is the proposed site plan with ponding area, landscaping, parking, and the two-story building. Uh, staff did want to ask, uh, council to consider amending this site plan as we caught a discrepancy on the site plan. And we have discussed it with the applicant, and they are amendable to changing, uh, the site plan to expand the parking that's shown in the center and have the par, parallel parking removed, expanding, uh, the parking and eliminating that recreational area just a little bit to eliminate the driveways to the bottom left hand of the screen, farther to the left, just a little more. All of those driveways would not be acceptable. You wouldn't want that much conflict on a residential street, a lot of cars backing in and out. And they can accommodate the parking that they need if they just expand that middle, middle, uh, parking area. And in summary, the request is that council consider approving this rezoning request from R-one to R-two to allow for a multifamily residential development with apartments and the amended site plan. With that, uh, staff can answer any questions. The applicant is also available, uh, at the meeting today to answer any questions as well.
Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos.
Can, can we go back to the parking and, and, uh? I know you said the, the middle part. Um, we can go back to that slide where the... Can you point out where, what's the middle part of, of that area that they're trying to amend?
Parking. So they want to eliminate the parking on the left, that's just several driveways backing out onto Santa Paula. We'd, we'd want them to eliminate that and move all of the parking into the middle area, which would, they would need to expand it to the right so that the parking on the right could mirror the parking on the left.
So where, where the arrow is pointing right now, or was pointing?
Yes.
That would be the mid-area, and that's where they would, uh, amend it?
Yes. Both eliminating the driveways to the left and expanding the parking in the middle.
Okay, thank you.
So eventually, all of this in the back would be just, uh, green, uh...
Oh, I don't think they've decided what they would do with now this available space that fronts Santa Paula. Uh, it, that would be up to them if they wanted just more green space or, additional amenity. I, that would be up to them.
I don't think I'd be comfortable with just letting it go and just having them, well, whatever they decide.
Uh, we can take that back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to get the site plan approved.
And then make.
Option.
All the, the, the park would be reduced as well. How, how much?
Their recreational area?
Right.
But they could expand it or provide additional... We can ask the applicant what they would foresee.
Okay.
And, and that could also be included in the amendment if you choose to approve the, the request.
Can we ask that?
Hello, good evening. My name is Sergio Serano, and I'm the applicant for the site, or the condition to rezon from R-one to R-two.
So what would you do in that space where they're saying, uh, the parking has to, has to be in the middle?
Yeah, so I would increase it by ten feet, which is like the standard that I would need in order for cars to go from the left side to the right side, uh, eight more parking spaces. Um, I mean, regarding like the spaces in the front, I, I could either, I mean, just leave it green or do a ponding area on that side and increase the recreational area, uh, just depending on what the city requires me to do. Uh, but of course, I mean, if the parking spaces, that was something that I was notified, uh, earlier this morning, so I wasn't able to adjust the site plan. Uh, but yes, of course, I would go ahead and move that extended ten feet, and then that way sixteen parking spaces will be able to fit there.
In, in the middle? Okay.
Here. Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos.
Uh, getting back to planning and zoning, um, the, I know that, uh, you stated, um, that, um, whatever the city would require, um, at this point, I believe I heard our, our planning and zoning director say that whatever it is that you guys want it, well, that could be also dirt, correct? Just leave it dirt?
No, I mean, of, of course, I would like for the apartments not to, uh, I mean, I would do something that is environmentally friendly, of course, that looks good for the apartments, that looks good for the neighborhood. I'm not just gonna leave it as dirt. Uh, just depending on the landscape, uh, I could either put trees there, or I could put a walkway there, uh, lighting there. I mean, uh, I wouldn't want to leave it blank and just, uh, not have anything as, uh, just dirt. Of course, none, it was something that I'll do last, landscaping there and try to improve how the, how the apartments look.
Can we, uh, can we amend it? Just, uh, stating that you would do some type of improvement other than dirt, dirt? Uh, anybody?
Sorry, yes, yes. We can make that amendment.
We, we can do that, okay, yeah. Alrighty.
Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, good evening. So, I, I don't, not all developments come with a rendering. I know this is a site plan, and I know that, uh, as, as Ms. Quimido stated, there is a discrepancy in the original plans that are presented here today. I honestly don't feel comfortable with voting on an item that, that doesn't display a true and accurate, um, site plan. I'd like to make a motion right now to table this item until the developer can work with our P and Z and coordinate something to, uh, to display something that's more accurate at this time. Again, that's just my motion. I don't know how the rest of the council feels at this time.
And that will only extend to the site plan. Would you all feel comfortable with the zoning change? Or take the whole thing back to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Well, I'd like, I'd like to have it taken back to the Planning and Zoning Commission because I don't know if that throws off any of the, of the, the, like, the meets and bounds. I don't, I don't have it in front of me. I don't, I don't know how that would affect it. Um, to be quite honest, it's a nice big property. I, I pass by there quite often. I, I would have liked to have seen two, uh, maybe two large, uh, you know, uh, residential dwellings than, than the apartments because I did, I did receive, uh, some calls from the, the neighbors there, uh, close by that, a-again, they don't, they don't have the same vision that you have as far as a developer. And this, this development here, is it, is it HUD? Or is it just private development?
Uh, what was the, what was the question again? I'm sorry?
So like HUD, HUD is, um, is it, is it gonna be available like for low-income housing and stuff like that? Or is it just private development? Whoever qualifies to move into the home, is there gonna be any requirements on your end as far as background checks?
Yeah, of course, there's, I actually did a presentation, uh, explaining what kind of requirements, because, uh, concerned with the neighbors was, uh, security. So I do live in that neighborhood. I live on the other side of the neighborhood.
Okay.
Of course, I don't want any, you know, bad people to move in there. And there were, there would be background checks, uh, credit checks. Uh, it's just, I, mainly, I would like to rent, uh, with families with small children. That way, they could go ahead and go to nearby schools. Uh, 'cause I, I was, uh, part of the Socorro District. I was, uh, working as, like, an internship, and there was low registration when it came to Socorro Middle School, Es Contreras. So some of those schools, uh, I'm not too sure, uh, if you knew, but those, some of those schools had low registration. Um, and that was something that I, that I believe. I mean, that's why I decided to do two bedrooms. That way, if there was any children, prior, my priority would be to rent to those tenants, um, just to increase the amount of children that go to schools and help out the community.
And so it's four units on the bottom and then four units up top?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. And, and all of, each, each unit is, is, is the same square footage? Two-bedroom?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. And actually, I mean, for the recreational area, I, I don't think that's, uh, like, something that is required by the city. It's just something that I decided to do 'cause I do know there is a park just a couple of, uh, feet away from there. Um, there's multiple parks there. Um, and then another issue was with traffic. The person that came, uh, and spoke on the meeting for planning and zoning, one of the issues was, uh, traffic, uh, generating, um... The, the reason why I believe traffic generated in that area is regarding like the Tropicana homes that are by Place Road, that use that avenue, uh, that road to go ahead and gain access to the main avenue. So that saw an increase on like the amount of cars that passed through that part of the...
What, on, on this site? Ms. Quimido, for this development here, what's the required parking space, um, needed?
It's the... One and a half parking spaces per unit?
So they, 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 they meet, they, they meet, they overmeet the expectations and requirements as for the city. And the development and developer have also decided to add a recreational area, which is not a requirement. It's just something that they decided to add as far as the landscape goes, right? It's just something that they decided to add as far as the landscape goes, right?
And as the applicant mentioned, he did bring a presentation, would you like to listen to his presentation as well?
I would.
So it's basically, I believe it's some of the information that they covered, so it's, well, the first one is just going over the information on the property. It is the 170 Escalante Drive, it's 21,886 feet and 0.3 square feet, so it's half an acre. And right now I'm trying to switch it over to R2, medium-density residential. From what I received when I came to speak to the secretaries, I'm sorry, the clerks, so the permitted uses is the multifamily dwellings, the maximum density of 15 dwellings per acre, which half of that would be seven and a half, runs out to eight, and then the minimum lot area, 6,000 square feet for areas with ponding, and the setbacks are 25 feet front and back, which it does have, and inside are the five feet. And then, like I mentioned, it's going to be two-bedroom units, and it's going to include two parking spaces per each unit. And it's the design of the units, so that is what it's going to look like. It's eight units totaling 4,864 square feet, they're going to be 24 foot, four inches by 25, so it's going to be 608 square feet, and then two bedrooms, one bathroom, two-story design with two staircases. And then the construction to property size, so it's 4,864 square feet to 21,886, so it takes up 22.2, 22% of the land. I was going to, I'm sorry, I was going to change that over to 16 spaces, and then it's the area is 50 by 60 recreation area. And then ponding, it's depending on the size of the, of the, like the construction, which is something that I would get done by an engineer, of course. And some of the issues that I mentioned earlier was traffic, so the traffic has increased due to the construction of new houses that I mentioned built on the Tropicana homes that are close by. Those residents usually use like the streets from like our neighborhood to go ahead and gain access to the main avenue. And to some points against that, I mean, the city keeps growing, expanding, new houses are going to be built, and then construction, I mean, of course, new infrastructure is going to be developed as well as new houses are built. Security, background and credit checks will be administered to potential tenants. And then, like I mentioned, I'll give priority to applicants with younger children that can go ahead and attend nearby schools. And to some positive things for this, I mean, economic development, new construction of property is going to generate higher taxes for city development. It makes the neighborhood look more developed and cleaner, more family income, that way it allows them to spend on local businesses. And the children from those families can attend nearby schools with low student registration. And then the last slide, it just shows some examples of the nearby apartments that are there. So there's, on the pink ones that you see to the right side, those are 12 apartments, they're located at 364 Escalante Drive. And then on the other side you can see seven, and then four, those are right around the curve where this proposed construction doing is, and those are four right there. So I just listed another set of apartments that are nearby there. And that is the presentation.
I have a few more questions. Now, as far as the upkeep of the property, who will be taking care of that?
Myself, my family, so I, like I mentioned, I do live, I pass through there every single day, I live in that neighborhood. So it wouldn't be an issue for me to maintain like the property or anything like that.
Like, so you're willing to do the grass and mowing and cutting and say there's any, will you be hiring a property manager?
I mean, this, this was...
Or just yourself to?
Yeah, it would be myself and my family, I mean, this is a, I mean, this is something small for me for the moment. And yeah, of course, I, I mean, it would take care of it like if it were going to be my own business.
Do we have a question?
My name is Sergio Serano, I actually own, I owned the property because of brother. When it comes to, I guess, managing, I pretty much work from mortgage, so we're trying to make a LLC out of it, if you can say. This is kind of like the beginning, we're looking into expanding later on. I know there's a lot of like Saratoga, I know Carefree is expanding, building homes by North Loop as well. So it's not something that, you know, we're there yet, but this is something that, you know, we saw the opportunity to be able to contribute a little bit, start building homes. Five years ago, I actually came by, I subdivided my land, and I was able to build my house, it's across from there. So, I mean, we're trying to build homes here, you know, we're trying to get families to move in here. I mean, that's pretty much it, I mean, we can...
I'm, I'm just worried about the upkeep because some of these, say, some of the, some of the properties that you showed just have dirt. I wouldn't want...
Right.
That, you're, you're showing us a property that has, you know, is nice and green and, you know, is going to have a recreational area. I just wouldn't want it to fall into, you know, dirt. That just doesn't look good.
Correct, no, 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 and that's why, you know, we want to go ahead and do the landscape, we want to make sure that it's kept. You can visit our homes if you like to see how we keep up with our houses as well. Like I told you, we just live right across the street, so you can stop by. So I don't think, I mean, if you need for us to hire someone, I mean, I know you guys can't really make it a mandatory, but I mean, we can look into that as well.
Do you have any questions? Do we have a second?
We have a motion.
What's the motion?
To postpone.
To postpone or to table item to go back to planning and zoning.
Mayor and Council, Jim Martinez, City Attorney, if we're going to move to postpone it, if that's the motion, I would suggest, I think you need to identify the meeting. If there is no particular meeting, you just want to return it to, to... Sorry, the commission, you can make that the substance of the motion as well.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. When's the next scheduled meeting?
Eighteenth.
The first two days.
You just said a second meeting in, in May, but the first meeting in June.
It'll be the second meeting in May, right? So I'd like to make a motion to postpone this item until the developers can work with PNZ and bring back a, an updated version of the, the site plan. And that will be displayed here on the, in the second meeting of May, which is going to be May, May 16.
The 16th could be the planning and zoning meeting, where they, we have time to put it on that agenda, and then bring it back to City Council for your first meeting in June.
Okay, again, it's, it's just, I, I feel like, I, I feel we have to do our due diligence as a council as well and not vote on something that's, that's... Because this is what I'm voting on right now, right, what's being displayed here?
No, you can make the amendment to, for us to add that change, and we will, as staff, work with the applicant to, to implement that change.
Okay, then that's going to be my...
And we will, we will not allow it to be undeveloped dirt, gravel. It will be abiding by the changes that we mentioned, closing off those excess, excessive driveways, expanding the parking area, and treating that un, that, I, I, sorry, newly identified area in, in a proper aesthetically pleasing way that is...
So Jim, how do we say it in five words, to amend?
You could just simply say you changed your motion to, if I understood you correctly, tell me if I'm wrong, to approve the matter with the change to the site plan that...
Right, motion to approve the matter with changes stated by the PNZ direct, I'm sorry, city, our city planner, Ms. Kimiro, yes. That'd be my motion.
Second.
Ruben Reyes, the absence, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item number 17, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master and rezoning of Block 6, Track 2B and 3, Socorro Grant located at the corner of Inglewood and North Loop Drive, Socorro, Texas, from A1 Agricultural to C2 General Commercial District to allow a commercial development. It is 6:56 PM, public hearing is now open. Would anybody like to speak on this item? As there are no speakers, public hearing is now closed at 6:57 PM. Item number 18, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the city of Socorro's master and rezoning of Block 6, Tracks 2B and 3, Socorro Grant located at the corner of Inglewood and North Loop Drive, Socorro, Texas, from A1 Agricultural to C2 General Commercial District to allow a commercial development.
This rezoning request is for an approval, approval from an A1 agricultural zoning to C2 general commercial zoning to allow for commercial development. A little bit of background on this item, the property is 2.1846 acres, it is at North Loop and Inglewood. The property is currently vacant, and the proposed land use would be commercial development. Again, the request is to approve rezoning from A1 Agricultural to C2 Commercial to allow for commercial development. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted for, to approve the item at their April 4th meeting. Again, the property is at the corner of North Loop and Inglewood, and just at the edge of the Socorro city limits. It is a small agricultural tract at the edge of the, the city limits, to the north is M1 ICU-MUD and development, and then agricultural zoning to the, to the south. Next slide. These are photographs of the property from that intersection at North Loop and Inglewood. And aerial view of the property. This rezoning is a small part of a larger development that is residential and, and within the city of El Paso, city limits. So for your consideration today is this request to rezone from A1 Agricultural to C2 Commercial to allow for commercial development. The applicant's representative is on the phone, if you have any questions for the representative, and I can also answer any questions at this time.
Motion to approve, second.
Ms. Villalobos.
Just real quick, have they proposed what type of commercial they want to bring in? Is it warehouse, is it another, you know, more 18-wheelers, what, what are we looking at?
It's commercial development, C2, so any of the uses within C2 would be allowable. I do not believe in, that might be a question for Mr. Oscar DePuy's on the line whether or not they've already identified lease, folks who are interested in leasing the property.
I would like to know if they know what they're going to start with.
That's, that's the name, Mayor and Council, this is Oscar DePuy with CEA Group. And to answer your question then, at this point, no identified user has, has been identified for the commercial use, but the uses would be whatever is allowed in a C2. I believe warehousing is not allowed on a C2, that has to go through an ICU-MUD as per city code. So it would be your, your traditional commercial development, possibly hopefully some restaurants that will be able to support the existing ICU-MUD that is across on North Loop and Noble Tanks Road with the warehousing. So it's, it's really the proposed intent is to provide commercial uses that will support the existing uses, which is the residential, as well as the existing developments that are along Noble Tanks Road.
Thank you.
Mayor, ma'am.
Mr. Cruz.
Mr. Oscar DePuy, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I, I think that the majority of, of the folks sitting here on the table, we, we're in agreement, we, we would like to see some storefront commercial with some, some restaurants, something different that Socorro hasn't seen, to be honest with you. I, I, I don't, I don't like the, see the, the storage containers and all that, but I'll tell you what, whoever comes in here and decides to put some nice family restaurants there, they're, they're, they're going to kill it with, with all the development over on the other side of the road there. I'm just, I'm just telling you right now, and that'll be a good thing here for Socorro, and that'll be a good thing there for all the folks that are going to be working in those, those warehouses. And if that's something that you can also relay to the developer and potential folks that want to develop in there and move in there, that'd be really, really nice.
That, that's correct, sir, and I appreciate the comments, and, and actually, this developer is the same developer that did the developments around, along Noble Tanks Road. And actually, he's the one that actually brought Wing Daddy's, that I believe in talking to the developer, and this is from, talking to the manager, the regional manager, that, that Wing Daddy's, I think, is the number one store that has generated revenue for, for, for the entire region that he represents.
Mr. Oscar DePuy, anyone that comes to Socorro is going to be number one, I'm telling you right now, you got to jump on it, sir.
Right. There is underserved areas that need these type of commercial developments, so if you, I pass by that Wing Daddy's on a Thursday or Friday, and people are parking on the streets, on the empty lots, it is packed. And so it's something that needs commercial development in that area. So hopefully, this type of development will support the, you know, the uses and the needs that City of Socorro has and needs.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes, the absence, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Grants Department, item number 19, discussion and action to ratify a letter of support for the city of San Elizario's fiscal year 2023 Transportation Alternative Set-aside TA Program Grant Application.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Alejandro Arlade, City Development Director. We are requesting your approval for a letter of support for San Elizario's application to the FY 2023 Transportation Alternatives Program. Their project involves a bike-sharing program with facilities and signage. We believe that this project will all, also benefit Socorro in our goals to promote our historic mission trail and connect the missions from Socorro to San Elizario.
Ruben Reyes, the absence, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number 20, discussion and action to ratify a letter of support for the city of El Paso, El Paso's FY 2023 Climate Pollution Reduction Grant, CPRG, notice, notice of intent to participate as the lead organization for the El Paso, Texas metro area.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. On this item, we are also requesting your approval for a letter of support for the city of El Paso. The EPA has received some funding to allow communities to develop a climate pollution reduction action plan. The El Paso MPO has received approximately $1 million, and the city of Socorro, of El Paso has requested to take the lead for the El Paso metropolitan statistical area. And we want to support those efforts. The city of El Paso would then convene one-to-one meetings with the city of Socorro so that Socorro also has a table, a place at the table and can voice their climate pollution reduction goals as well.
Ruben Reyes, the absence, Cesar Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-one, discussion and action to award R F P twenty-three dash zero two for the provision of economic recovery strategic services to Ascendo Strategies LLC and approved city manager or her designated to negotiate and execute a contract not to exceed eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Motion to approve for discussion? Second.
Good afternoon, Ma- uh, Mayor and Council. We are requesting your approval to award R F P twenty-three oh two to Ascendo Strategies. Um, the city did issue R F P twenty-three oh two in April twenty twenty-three for the provision of an economic recovery strategic plan. This is one of our projects that is included in our ARPA spending framework, so that's where the funding is coming from for this project. Um, we did receive three proposals. These viable proposals were scored by a committee. Uh, the scoring is included in your backup, and at this time, we're requesting your approval for, to award that R F P to Ascendo Strategies and allow city manager to negotiate with the firm.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, just, just to make it clear, um, for everyone at this table, the not to exceed amount of eighty-seven thousand is ARPA funding, correct?
That's correct.
It's not coming out of the O N M operational budget for the city, okay?
No, it's coming out of ARPA.
Thank you.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Moving on to Planning and Zoning Department, item number twenty-two, discussion and action to approve event permit for Cultura District Event Center for Saturday, May sixth, twenty twenty-three, from two P M to eleven thirty P M at one oh one sixty-seven Socorro Road. Event name is Seis de Mayo Fiesta del Pueblo. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve. Second.
Thank you. The request is for an event permit and a variance from the noise standards to extend the maximum allowable noise level to eleven P M, so that the applicant, Cultura District Event Center, can host their Seis de Mayo Fiesta del Pueblo event at, uh, one oh one six seven Socorro Road. The event is scheduled for September, sorry, Saturday, May sixth, and, uh, the event would run from two P M to eleven thirty P M. The recommendation from Planning and Zoning Staff is to approve the request for the event permit and, uh, the variance from the, uh, noise ordinance. Staff has been, uh, working with the applicant, uh, for several, um, weeks, and trying to square the details of the event away and, um, why we are presenting it, uh, on such short notice. Uh, with that, staff can answer any questions?
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-three, discussion and action to approve resolution seven forty-eight, approving a subdivision replat, Bowman Estates Unit Two replat L being lot three, block five, Bowman Estates Unit Two, Socorro, Texas, A K S one 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 nine eight Rankin.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve for discussion? Second.
Thank you, uh, Mayor. This request is for the approval of a replat to subdivide one residential lot into two residential lots, Bowman Estates Unit Two replat L. The current zoning is R one, single-family residential. It is a little over half an acre in size. The address is eleven, uh, thousand one hundred ninety-eight Rankin Drive. The land is currently vacant. The proposed land use would be residential, and the request is to approve a replat to subdivide one residential lot into two. Planning and zoning staff recommends approval. Planning and zoning commissioners voted for approval at their April eighteenth meeting. Next slide shows the, uh, general location of the, the request, of the property, part of the Bowman Estates, uh, subdivision. Uh, the zoning map shows that the, uh, area is zoned R one. Here are some photographs of the property, and an aerial view of the property. This is the original plat for Bowman Estates, and then a, uh, copy of the replat request, submitting, again, dividing the one lot into two, being of sufficient size for, uh, single residential homes. Next slide. Uh, with that, um, just like to summarize that the request again is for an approval of and replats to subdivide one lot, one residential lot into two residential lots, and with that, staff can answer any questions.
Mayor.
Ms. Villalobos?
Ms. Kimiro, so it's going to stay R one, but we're just dividing this lot into two so they could possibly put two residential homes on there? Two R one residential homes?
Yes, there's no need to change the zoning. All they are doing is subdividing the one lot into two to place residential units on each lot.
Okay, all righty. Thank you for the clarification.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, discussion and action to approve resolution seven forty-nine, approving a subdivision replat, Horn subdivision replat A being lots one, two, three, and four, block one, Horn subdivision, Socorro, Texas.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Yes, second.
Thank you. This request is for Horn subdivision replat A. The request is for the approval of a replat to combine four residential lots into one. The current zoning is R two, medium density, density residential, which was recently approved by council, I believe it was within the last, uh, few months. And the addresses for those properties are one oh six seventy-eight, one oh six eighty, one oh six eighty-two, one oh six eighty-four Horn Circle. The land is currently vacant. The proposed, uh, land use is multifamily residential apartment complex. The request is to approve the replating to combine the four units into one. Planning and zoning commission, uh, Planning and Zoning Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission voted to approve it at their April eighteenth meeting. The next slide shows the location map depicting the area where the property is located, so it's just generally a little kind of north of the horizon and North Loop intersection. This is a current zoning map showing the R two, um, residential zoning for this lot, and pictures of the vacant property, and an aerial photograph. This was the previous Horn subdivision depicting the four lots and the new replat request, combining the four lots into one to develop the apartment complex that was approved by council. With that, again, the summary, in summary, the request is for approval of a replat to combine four residential lots into one, and staff can answer any questions that you might have at this time. Questions?
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Do we have a motion to delete items twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven?
Motion to delete twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven.
Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Ruben Reyes's absence, Isra Nevaris.
Yes.
Alejandro Garcia.
Aye.
Rudy Cruz.
Aye.
And Ivan Colom Villalobos.
Yes.
Meeting adjourns at seven sixteen P M. Good night.
Night.